Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I now call the special meeting of the School Board of Palm Beach County to order at 3:19 PM. Mrs. — hold on one second. Mrs. Bass, will you please call the roll?
District One Barbara McQuinn.
Here.
District Two Alexandra Ayala, absent. District Three Karen Brill.
Here.
District Four Erica Whitfield.
Here.
District Five Frank Barbieri.
Here.
District Six Marcia Andrews.
Here.
District Seven Deborah Robinson.
Here.
We have quorum with six board members present. Also joining us Superintendent Dr. Donald Fanoi, General Counsel Sean Bernard, Inspector General Theresa Michael, and Board Clerk Carol Bass. Senior staff members will join us periodically as directed by the superintendent. Viewers and listeners can access the meeting today by either watching on Comcast Channels 234 and 235, U-verse Channel 99, or by using the YouTube link on our webpage at PalmBeachSchools.org. In the event that the link is interrupted for technical reasons, please switch over to the TV channels. All board meetings are recorded in their entirety and posted on the district website within 24 hours. We also offer a listening-only option which the public can access by calling (561) 357-5900 toll-free at (1-866) 930-7015. The meeting ID is (1561) 880-1124. This meeting is being transcribed by closed captioners, so remember to speak at a reasonable pace. Will everyone please stand for the pledge to be led by Superintendent Dr. Donald Fanoi?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to welcome any public speakers who are joining us in person today. While your attendance here at the board meeting is appreciated, please be mindful of important safety protocols that the board now has in place to conform with COVID-19 safety guidelines and school board policies. The School District of Palm Beach County supports the peaceful assembly of persons to express themselves regarding matters concerning district students, employees, and the community. However, if such peaceful assembly results in a disturbance, those persons may be subject to arrest or other lawful action. So please be respectful of all persons who are present on school district property. In an effort to keep all participants and district employees safe, everyone must obey all lawful orders issued by law enforcement, which may include remaining or moving to a specific area or location, lowering voices for safety reasons, or other safety-related commands. Please sit only in designated seats, do not move any furniture, and do not move about the room unless you are speaking at the podium, exiting to the restroom, or leaving the building. Please maintain social distancing at all times, remain in the designated areas, and leave the property once your visit is complete. School police has been instructed to remove anyone from the meeting who does not adhere to these safety protocols and procedures as I have outlined. Please respect this cautionary warning that in the event of interference with the orderly processes of the meeting, failure to follow the safety protocols and procedures or otherwise disruptive conduct, it will result in removal of the person from the meeting or other action. Thank all of you for helping to maintain decorum and the orderly conduct of school board business. Before I turn — before we — no, I'm not doing that. It's a little bit out of order here. That'll take us to the item on the — yeah. We've added one item for good cause, P1. Good cause exists, we add this item in order to allow employees to start in their new positions as soon as possible. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything else to add at this time?
Nothing to add, Mr. Superintendent.
Any items to withdraw?
Yes, sir, I'd like to remove Jan Bachmueland from the record for the personnel agenda.
All right. All right, board members, there's been one item pulled so far. It's BRD3. Do you wish to pull anything else? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve the agenda as modified. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Are there any disclosures or abstentions by the board members? Seeing none, we'll go to superintendent comments.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, as these will be my final board comments, my suggestion — one of the things I want to talk about is I want to really take a moment just to thank the board for allowing me the opportunity to serve in this capacity over the last three years. I have grown a lot, and I — but I am very excited about the opportunity to spend a lot more time with my family. I want to say to my team, wow, what a ride we've been on, and it's been a pleasure. You all have my cell phone number. Call me when you need me, except anytime soon. To the entire great team here in Palm Beach County, we have done great work over the last couple of years. Our national recognition is something we should all be proud of. To our parents and kids who have been so resilient over the last year and a half during this unprecedented time, I say thank you. But right now, I really want to say congratulations, and I have put my children's trust in the leadership of Mike Burke. And so as we go through the process today, I say congratulations to you, sir, and I look forward to the great work that you — and the leadership you're going to provide this district moving forward. Mr. Chairman, those are my comments at this time, and thank you, everyone, for an amazing job, and thank you for supporting me.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mrs. McQuinn, you have comments? Mrs. Whitfield? Mrs. Andrews?
Yes, just a couple of comments. First of all, I'm pretty excited today to be a part of the swearing-in for our next superintendent, Mr. Mike Burke. So it's an exciting time for all of us. The superintendency is one of the biggest jobs we have within this district, so I'm pretty excited today. And I'd like to thank Dr. Sheffield, as well as Kevin McCormick and Ed Tierney for helping me work with parents as it relates to ESE issues, with children trying to make sure that their IEPs are met, to make sure that they can be able to do what every other child will do when we start the school on August 10th. There's still a lot of work to be done, but I do want this board to know that we have to look out for our ESE students. We have to look out for every student, but especially those students who are on an individualized education plan, and we've got to accommodate them to make sure that they can be successful. So other than that, it's an exciting day. I'm here, and thank you all for helping our ESE students.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. Well, Dr. Fanoi, I wish you the best, and, like, don't block my number. So, and Mr. Burke, I wish you the best, and just prayerful for Palm Beach County. So, let me just update you. On July 19th, the COVID positivity rate was 23.7 per 100,000 in Palm Beach County. Today, it is 38 per 100,000. The daily positivity rate went from 11.7% to 16%. I'm tired of offering my suggestions. I'm tired of sending articles that accurately reflect the medical situation without using too much medical language. But most of all, I'm worried. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Vice Chairwoman Brill?
Thank you. So I've said this before, but I want to say it again. Dr. Fanoi, I want to thank you so much for your leadership. I thank you for the relationship that we have developed over time. I will miss my time talking to you. I'm sure we'll stay in touch. I'm excited for you and for your family. I'm also excited for Mr. Burke. We've all come a long way, but the one thing I want to say, I want to commend my colleagues on the board, because although there's times when we'll sit up here and we disagree, when the going gets tough, we pull together, and we have to be proud of ourselves for the way that we made the decision to move Mr. Burke and his acceptance of it into the position as the interim superintendent. I think that we have shown the public that we have great confidence in the direction that we're going in, and I think Mr. Burke's acceptance of the position says that he's confident in the direction that we're going. And so I'm just very proud of us and proud of all of you for all of us sticking together. And again, Dr. Fanoi, all the best to you and your family.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Doc, I want to thank you also for your leadership over the past three years, and I know that the board appreciates that you'll be sharing your institutional knowledge with soon-to-be Superintendent Burke to ensure that the transition process runs smoothly. You know, it's been said that you have done a job well if you leave it better than you found it, and that you most certainly have done. Thanks for the job well done despite all the challenges presented by the pandemic and the other challenges that you faced in your tenure as superintendent, including all of the safety measures that we had to put in place following the tragedy of Marjorie Stoneman-Douglas. I know that was a big lift, and you handled it very well. Our students are safer today than they've ever been in the past because of your efforts. And of course, like my colleagues, I wish you and your family only the best as you begin the next chapter in your lives. So thank you for a job well done. We have one agenda item speaker, Jane Swanko. Would you please come up to the microphone? Ms. Swanko, please watch the screen. You have three minutes to address the board.
I'm always so tall, I don't want to — okay, okay. First, I want to thank Carol for letting me come today to speak to you again. I was here last week, and I'm sure most of you have read the article in Palm Beach Post today regarding Mrs. Terro Campo and what's going on in Atlantic. And I'm here because that did not complete all that I — I've been involved at this school for five years, and there's so much more going on that you all don't know, and I want to — I gave you a letter last week. I told you all the information, so I'm going to be as brief as possible to get it to you. Number one, I've been there for five years, and these community activists that say that they're involved with Atlantic and made a decision, I've never heard of their names. Mr. Strawn, who has been involved in this, I've just now heard of his name. Five years I've been there, 10 to 20 hours a week, never heard any of these people's names. I am there. This summer program alone, $71,000 I got donated for their summer program to make sure those kids are being educated for the SAT coming up next week, their meals taken care of, their medical taken care of, their insurance taken care of. I am an activist. I don't call myself that. I'm a producer, but I am an activist, and I do that because I believe in this program. And I'm incensed that all of you kind of took it on your own to unilaterally just release her without an investigation. I don't know if any of you have ever had a 6'3", 250-pound football player cry on your arms because he doesn't know why everyone is dying around him. That's what's going on in the inner city. This nonsense about racism is ridiculous. This whole thing started with six people, four students, two black, one white, one minority, who did it three years ago, three years ago! And now they decide when Grant Strawn, a teacher at the school, is getting disciplined for the third time. She was disciplined once before in Miami, another time here from the Palm Beach School Board, and the third time that Mrs. Delagrotti was disciplining her, and then all of a sudden this racism stuff comes up. I gave you all a list of 15 to 20 players that I worked with in the last five years since 2017, and every one of them said, tell them to call me, I'll let them know there is no racism going on at this school. It doesn't exist. And then you get this letter from a Mr. Wiggins that nobody knows, a letter filled with information that nobody knows anything about. I personally, I told you I was an investigative reporter, I went to that PO box. It doesn't exist. The NAACP in this chapter doesn't exist. Wiggins said he was going to have a press conference. It didn't happen. You all made a decision on something, and my phone has been lighting up from all of my sponsors who donate almost $300,000 a year to this football program on six people who have problems. No offense, Mr. Barbieri, but you said the crime doesn't — the punishment doesn't fit the crime. She didn't commit a crime. If you all want to know about a crime, I'll show you the crime. I am asking you, because I am for real. I am involved with these kids. The crime is that you let somebody go that cares about these kids. I am demanding that you reinstate her today, because this is crazy, what you did, and you got everybody in the community upset, and they don't want to bring the money back to these kids because of what you did. Please reinstate Mrs. Ocampo. Thank you.
Board members, that was our only speaker at this time. We have no items pulled from consent. Oh, I'm sorry, BRD3 and P1 have been pulled from consent. Does anybody else want to pull anything else? General Counsel? No, on the P1 — on the P1 item, you know, I want to separate again, like we did last time, Mrs. Delagrotti from the P1. How do we do that?
You would just make a motion to separate those out first, and then following that, you would vote on the item as separated, and then take up the item whenever it comes up.
Okay.
But you would ask to specifically separate out.
So it asks for the motion when we get to P1?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Are there any other items anybody wants to pull besides BRD3 and P1? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So the first item under new business will be BRD3. I recommend the board approve the superintendent employment agreement with Michael J. Burke. Motion by Mrs. Andrews, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield. The board clerk is going to be passing out, if she hasn't already, to the board members a revised version of the employment agreement that I'm recommending for approval under item BRD3. After further discussion and following the Office of General Counsel's consultation with Mr. Burke's counsel this morning, I want to make two minor additions to the agreement. The first is in the title where I asked for the word interim to be added immediately before the word employment, and the other addition is in the third line of Section 1.1 where I asked that the phrase "on an interim basis" be added, so it now reads, "The board, in accordance with a motion duly adopted at its official meeting held on the 28th day of July 2021, has the duly vested authority to employ and does hereby employ Burke on an interim basis as its superintendent of schools pursuant to Section 1001.50 Florida statutes beginning on July 28, 2021, and continuing until the board selects a successor superintendent of schools, and that the individual assumes the position of superintendent of schools. I reviewed Mr. Wayne Gent's employment agreement when the board retained him as superintendent on an interim basis, and the changes I have made are consistent with the provisions in Mr. Gent's employment agreement. The original draft of the agreement with Mr. Burke had several references to interim in it, but they were removed at the request of Mr. Burke's counsel. There was a concern by Mr. Burke that the use of the words interim superintendent may cause the perception that he was something less than "the superintendent," and because the board-proved job description also does not include the word interim, I also consider that none of the board's policies make any reference to an interim superintendent, so I suggested to the board that Mr. Burke will be known as "the superintendent," not "the interim superintendent," and he'll sign his name on documents as superintendent of the School District of Palm Beach County. Is there any other discussion? Mrs. McQuinn?
And of course, we're just now getting the amended, but I still would make my comments. First of all, I was very happy with Mr. Burke's contract, because it was very clear to me under terms of the agreement 1.1 and 1.3 that he would be serving at the will of the board, and there is language to the successor. So it didn't concern me. I did receive, however, a couple of concerns that interim was not in there. So I'm delighted to see that it is agreement for the interim employment of the superintendent of the School Board of Palm Beach County. When I was first appointed a principal, I was acting. However, no one said, "Let me introduce you to Acting Principal McQuinn." So certainly, Mr. Burke will be our superintendent, but thank you for just saying that he is employed on an interim basis. So thank you for clarifying that. I wanted to make sure that the public does not think that we're trying to be non-transparent with them, so I appreciate the opportunity to point that out. Thank you.
Mrs. Andrews, and then Ms. Brill?
And thank you. First of all, I love the change, and Mr. Burke, you are the superintendent. But I want to thank Mr. Barbieri for all of his hard work. I'm happy to have a legal person sitting on this board with us, but I want to also thank our General Counsel, General Counsel Sean Bernard, for putting that chart together to let us see exactly what we've done over the years with the last several superintendents with Dr. Fanoi, Dr. Avosa, Mr. Burke, and looking at how this contract was laid out, I wasn't surprised that Mr. Burke really truly cares about kids here in Palm Beach County, because I know him, but I know he thinks about dollars and cents as it relates to making sure that we have monies for our children. And when I look at this contract, Mr. Burke, I know that you said here in this contract, it's about the children, and it's not about the dollars, and I see how we saved the money, and it was mish together, where you're coming in here to get the work done, and truly, you're committed to the School District of Palm Beach County. I love this contract, and I'm just pretty happy today, so thank you.
Vice Chairwoman Brill?
Thank you. So I wasn't going to make a comment, but I will. First of all, I want to say thank you, Mr. Burke. I think you're going to do an awesome job. I think I'm delighted that you will have the opportunity also to apply for the permanent position, and, you know, as we said in our prior meeting, we're going to take input from the public, and I wanted to make sure that everybody knows that that's our intent. And I think that these extra words in here just really make sure that everybody knows that we're being, as one of my colleagues said, transparent, that you are going to be our superintendent for this interim period until someone is permanently named. It doesn't lessen the job, but there is no job in statute as interim superintendent, so Mr. Burke has to assume the job with that title and has to have all the authority. And I'm just thrilled that after sitting through all these years of our meetings, you want the job. So I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. When I spoke to Mr. Burke this morning, I said, "Welcome to the Coliseum, Mr. Gladiator," because I think that should be his title, probably. Is there any other discussion on this item? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Mr. Burke, we have one more item on the agenda to deal with, and then I'll ask the board and Dr. Fanoi to come down, and we'll swear you in as our new superintendent, and we'll go from there. All right? So stick around.
Are you going to take a break in between?
Yes, we will. Yeah, and then we'll take a break right after that swearing-in before we start the next meeting for the public's information. Dr. Robinson?
I think this might be a point of order, and I know I'm out of order, but I think that we probably might need to address BRD2, even though we voted on it under consent, because it's just accepting Dr. Fanoi's — it says we're going to discuss and accept his resignation, but it doesn't include the language from the motion last week about the interim superintendent continuing to consult with him in whatever form of fashion. So I don't — I just want to make sure that legal is good, that the item that we just voted on under consent is in alignment with what we said last week.
Yeah, if I may go first before General Counsel. BRD2, I was going to make a comment on it anyway, because I just want to make it clear, under the superintendent's contract, the board has the authority to reassign him. I told Dr. Fanoi this morning, there was no intention to demote him by putting him in as chief of staff. What we found out was when we tried to create a new job description for transitional superintendent, it wasn't possible under FR's rules to do that, so we had to find an open classification in senior management. The only one that was available was chief of staff, since Mr. Tierney has moved from chief of staff to deputy superintendent. So we just slid the superintendent in there, and he'll be working closely as the chief of staff with the new superintendent. So that's part of — actually, P1 makes that change, and that's where he's at. But if the General Counsel believes we should do something else in addition to that?
I don't think we have to, so to answer your question, Dr. Robinson, I think based on what was voted upon last week, it gave the flexibility for the board to allow Mr. Burke to determine what his need was, and then bring it back, and that is what's happening today.
I think it's important to Dr. Robinson's point. It's important for the public to know that Mr. Burke and I decided that I will stay with him in this role until August 9th, is what we agreed upon, and so that just needs to be on the record for you to understand.
Okay, thank you.
I should have made a comment when we were talking about the last one. Somebody — Mrs. Andrews, I just want to thank the General Counsel, especially Mr. Littlejohn. He put that contract wherever he's sitting, over here somewhere. He put the contract together the next day after the board meeting, and he and I have met a dozen times. I call him on his lunch, call him at home in the evening, so I appreciate all the hard work in getting it done so quickly with all the changes we kept making, and so thank you, Mr. Littlejohn, for helping the board get that contract in place quickly and efficiently, and you did a great job.
Mr. Barbieri?
Yes, Mrs. Whitfield.
Thank you. I'm sorry, personal privilege. I feel like I should have had an opportunity during the comments to say thank you to everyone, and I skipped it, not realizing what time we were at. So I just want to say a quick thank you to Dr. Fanoi for all the time you've spent with me, for all of the, you know, moments where I know you would have rather do anything else but come into this building, and you stood strong, and you fought for us, and you fought for the kids of Palm Beach County, and I really can't thank you enough for the time and the effort that you've put forward, and I just want to wish you the absolute best going forward. We're going to miss you. You've been a fabulous leader, and I just am super grateful to you. And then a big congratulations to Mr. Burke. I'm thrilled. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to have you here, to have someone of your esteem and your intelligence sitting with us up here at the DIADs. It's going to be so wonderful to have you. I'm so grateful, as Mrs. Brill said, that you even want this job, because it's really a very difficult time, so I just want to say a huge thank you and congratulations. We're very, very pleased to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Whitfield. Mr. Superintendent, that'll take us to P1.
Mr. Chairman, P1, I recommend the board approve the personnel agenda for July 26, 2021.
Motion by Mrs. Andrews, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield. I can't make a motion, but I'd like someone to make a motion to separate Mrs. Ocampo Delagrotti out of that motion made by Vice Chairwoman Brill, seconded by Mrs. Andrews. All in favor of that change? Opposed? Motion carries 4-2, with Dr. Robinson and Mrs. Whitfield in opposition to separating them out. General Counsel, how do we deal with this? We vote on — do we discuss the modification first on Mrs. Ocampo, or do we?
No, you start with the original, so take up a vote on P — is it P1?
Okay.
And then address the second part of it.
All right. Is there any discussion on P1 as modified by the motion? All in favor of P1? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Now we'll take the modification. Mr. Superintendent, your recommendation, I believe, is non-renewal?
Yes, sir, for the record, the recommendation from my office is non-renewal.
Discussion? Mrs. Whitfield?
All I want to say on this is that I feel very strongly that we should support our staff, who have spent quite a bit of time going through this item and researching on whether or not this is an appropriate choice for Mrs. Delagrotti Ocampo, and I feel that a non-renewal is a gift that we give to an employee when we no longer need them in that position anymore, that they have the opportunity to go out and have a different job afterwards. So I was hoping that that would be the outcome today, is that she would be able to go on and have continued success in her career in a different position. But I understand that may not be where we're headed today, but I feel that the staff has done a very good job, and I would like to support them in their work. Thank you.
This was brought to my attention that on the superintendent's motion, we need his recommendation on the non-renewal. I needed a motion and a second. So motion made by Dr. Robinson, seconded by Mrs. McQuinn. Any other discussion on this? Board members, all in favor of the superintendent's recommendation? Opposed? There's three of us opposed, Mrs. Andrews, Vice Chairwoman Brill, and myself. So motion carries — no, it doesn't. It's a split vote here without — General Counsel, split vote?
It fails.
Okay, so the failure of the motion means that she's not —
The failure of the motion means she is not non-reappointed.
All right.
So it goes back to the superintendent, and she's reinstated.
All right. Is there any other discussion or anything else the board has? We'll take a motion to — no, we're going to do this before we adjourn. We're going to go down to the floor. If the board members would like to come down with me, we'll swear in Superintendent Burke, and Dr. Fanoi, if you would, please join us. me, we'll swear in Superintendent Burke, and Dr. Fanoi, if you will, please join us.
Yes, sir. Mr. Burke, would you please repeat after me?
Wait, I've got this backwards, right? No, that's right. I'm left-handed, sorry.
I, Michael J. Burke, do solemnly swear.
I, Michael J. Burke, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida.
The Constitution and the government of the United States and state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state.
That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state.
That I will and faithfully perform the duties of superintendent of Palm Beach County.
That I will, well, and faithfully perform the duties of superintendent of Palm Beach County.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Can we get a formal picture, Mr. Barbieri? I want to get a formal picture with Chris.
Board members, we need to have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by Mrs. Andrews. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. We'll reconvene the meeting in about 15, 20 minutes with the workshop.